Select Boards meeting Monday, June 11th, 2018, 5:30 a.m. In attendance Chairman Dede, Russ Fox, Doug Moglen, Carl Steinhardt, and Cindy Pendleton.
And the Hamburglar.
And the Hamburglar. All right, folks, welcome aboard. It's starting a few minutes late, so it says convenient open session at 5:30. Instead, we're going to do public comment. Anyone have anything to say that feels it's meaningful? Please state your name and address for the board. Wonderful. All right. We tried. Okay, 5:30 VFW, American Legion, folks, come on up. How are you doing today?
Good.
I'm doing all right.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that...
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, have a seat. Sorry about that, Russ.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
If we could take a moment, we just learned today that our former building inspector, Minio Benetti, has passed away. Minio is a longtime resident of the town of Southwick. He was a World War II veteran. He was a Ranger in World War II. So we certainly all had a lot of respect and admired Minio for all he did for his country and for the town of Southwick. So if we could have a moment of silence for Minio Benetti. Thank you.
Yeah, he was still arguing with me why Benetti lets one five cents.
We probably should just mention, shoot the forty.
Shoot the forty.
Amen.
Yep. All right, so you guys are in front of us because we had some discussions back and forth over the last year or so in regards to our war memorials. And a family had reached out to us and basically felt that, you know, the family lived here all its life, in layman's terms, right? The gentleman got out of the service and landed in Southwick and spent, I don't know, thirty, forty years here, and then passed away. He's not on any stone because in theory, he didn't sign up out of Southwick. It was...
Taunton, I believe.
I think Taunton, yeah. And we went...
And there's been some others that had come during that.
Oh, there's, they're slowly all coming out of the woodwork. And, you know, it is what it is. I'm not a military guy, so learning from doing the last stone that this board tasked me with, you don't get anywhere if you're not military when it comes to putting names on stones and trying to get information out. You guys are like a wall, and I'm just some punk-ass kid that I couldn't get nothing done. Luckily Troy Hanky got involved with me, and we were able to accomplish what we have over there in the center of town. So between both of your groups, you came forward. Troy can't be here tonight, but he had some great ideas. You guys went back and forth, came up with an agreement that would, I like it, I think it works.
That's basically Troy that did that.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to be nice. Yeah. Troy does everything. I think he had this done before we had our discussion.
It's important both of your organizations reviewed it and agreed to it, and it would still honor your policies.
Right.
Well, I appreciate what you guys are trying to do.
So in front of us, gentlemen, is basically what we've come up with. Should we decide to put another stone up, this would encompass that stone, and it's, you have to have lived in town so many years, and the key point to is when you got out of the service, you had only so many years to get to Southwick. So, you know, you couldn't do twenty in Florida and end up in Southwick two years ago and say, hey, I'm going out on the stone. It doesn't work that way.
Right, that's not the criteria.
Right, which is great. You know, so you guys, the research was done. I like it, and you're in front of us tonight.
Still pretty strange.
Oh, it is, yeah. It's not easy. You know? Nope. So you're in front of us tonight to see if we'll pass this and move forward with fundraising down the road to get those funds together to...
That was my only...
Yes, sir.
Actually, I was just at the Massachusetts VFW convention this weekend.
Yep.
And found out there's actually legislation out there, bill for veteran organization for towns.
Yep.
That if we want to do, you know, another stone or any thing, you know, restore flag polling of that, there's funding out there. We have to talk to our local lawmakers, like Humison or someone, and he could propose a bill to get the town the money for that.
Nice.
So there's money appropriate in the state for all these cities and towns.
Right.
We just have to talk to our lawmakers and ask for it and have them get it for us.
A couple of years back, they actually got us five thousand, and we did not act within the appropriate time and weren't able to use that. So they, they've done their job plenty of times for us. It's unfortunate we weren't there to, you know, to do it. But now, I think, with all this being revived and, you know, and like both of your clubs even, right, you guys have some younger groups in there, finally, some young blood. You're young, you know, versus the old gentleman that used to come here in your shoes.
George.
Yeah, George. So it's great, nobody need that. You know, that's, like you just said, hey, I went to a meeting, there's money out there, we just got to go get it. Good. That's your task.
It worked out well.
Especially for me. Any questions, gentlemen?
No, I think we're, this will help resolve some issues.
Yep.
You know, and honor people that really call Southwick their home.
Right.
You know, so I think it's a good idea.
Doug?
No, I think the way it's written is great as far as, you know, for people who settled here after and spent the majority of their lives here.
Right.
They deserve to be recognized in what they, their adopted hometown or whatever they consider their hometown at that point.
Right, absolutely. All right, so Carl, what do we need to do? Vote on this?
Yeah, first reading.
Yep.
So I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then it'll be put on the agenda for...
All right, great. So we'll look it over and we'll bring it up again. You guys don't need to be here, and we'll let you know when we do discuss it. If you want to come, you can come, but we'll move forward with it. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Russ, don't get off.
Good to see you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming.
I know, this handshaking thing is just...
Got no babies to kiss, so.
No. Thank you for that, yeah.
You'll take this back?
All right, so let's take Board of Health. They've graciously showed up, so come on up, guys.
So I can one on your agenda.
How are we doing today?
Hi, Joe. How are you?
I'm all right. Been a long day, but I'm all right. So you're in front of us in regards to food establishment and serving licenses. That's what I have here.
Right, actually, Mr. Steinhardt asked us to come this evening. I had requested, asked the boards, request to have legal counsel look at our issues. Carl thought maybe a good idea to come in here, sit down and talk to you and see if we could resolve this issue, recurring issue with people not paying for their licenses.
Yep.
Either by...
Sure, I'm one of them, but I did pay everything.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did, Joe.
I did. And it's an interesting issue, especially this year.
Do you like some history?
Oh, please, yes.
So this has really never been a problem before? All of a sudden, we had one or two stragglers?
Yeah.
Right.
Right, literally, yeah.
So, but this year, while we raised our... Oh, this is Jeannie.
Hi, Jeannie, I'm sorry. Joe Dede, Board of Selectmen.
Member and vice director.
Douglas, Russ, Carl.
We know each other.
All right, continue.
So anyways, never been a problem, but we decided to raise our fees this year, first time in twenty, thirty years.
Yeah.
Pulled in an extra sixteen thousand for the town, but because we did it fairly late.
Yep.
We sent the licensees a letter saying instead of January first.
Right.
We're going to go to...
January thirty first.
Thirty first. So even though we're not required to notify them that the licenses are due by January first.
Correct.
We decided, okay.
What the heck?
Be nice.
Right.
Everybody that has a license in the Commonwealth is required to pay the license by the time it's due, whether they're notified by the regulating authority or not. Am I correct?
I'm assuming you are, yeah.
Okay, fine. But we thought because this year, we raised our fees, we didn't accept the lower fees. We said, here's your check, where new fees are going to come soon.
Right.
We'll give it to January thirty first to pay. So, okay.
Sounds like a great idea, right?
Absolutely.
Sure.
So we came back, and we had a number of stragglers.
Absolutely.
We had some different reasons why they were straggling.
Yeah.
We had a fine system we finally put in place after years and years and years, and we capped it at a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
Fifty bucks a week. We figured, who's not going to pay for their license? Because if you don't have a license, you're not supposed to do what the license says. For instance, if you don't have a driver's license, you're not supposed to drive. If you don't have a dental license, you're not supposed to do dentistry. The Commonwealth doesn't call me and say, why haven't you renewed your license, doctor?
Right.
If we catch you, we're going to bring a criminal complaint and yank my license.
Sure.
So we don't, but we, you know, we don't play that way. We said, okay, so here's the problem, what do we do about it?
Right.
So we sent out a number of letters to the non-payers.
Right.
Three?
Three total.
Three total.
Two after they were in arrears.
And that's for the food...
Food permits.
But not for the actual license to be in business?
No, that's different.
Right, 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 right.
Food, their food license. Food permit in order to serve food.
Their food license.
Right.
So we've sent the first license, we got some response. We didn't get the bill, we don't open...
Yeah, I didn't, I shouldn't use that excuse, but I didn't, yeah.
However, it's okay, no, well, so everybody, those people came in, they paid the fines, they paid the license.
Right.
But we had one or two as of the last meeting, which was Thursday, that still hadn't paid as of June eighth?
Right.
Seventh, whatever that date was.
Yep.
So we said, hey, we can't revoke their licenses.
We don't have them to revoke.
Well, we don't have anything to revoke, and so we can't shut them down unless we get a court order.
Court order.
We tried to do that with one of the other licensees way, way back then, and we found out that, and it, for good reason.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm with you, yeah.
You get two people don't like a restaurant, we're going to shut you down.
Yeah.
Because the cousins open up across the street, well, you need to judge this, and we can understand that.
Right.
So we said, hey, let's talk to the attorney and see what we can do, and then we'll talk to the selectmen later.
Right.
To coordinate this licensing stuff, because you have more clout than we do, because...
Correct.
I understand that if all the licenses aren't paid for, you're not supposed to issue the liquor license. Is that correct?
That is very correct.
Well, that's not what's happened in the past, and we need to, we would like to have some kind of cooperation with all the boards.
Well, absolutely.
That you guys, before that license gets issued, because on January thirty first, or January first of 2019, if some of these places don't have all their licenses, they can't serve liquor. Well, that's more of an incentive than us waiting four months to...
Absolutely. And when I came in to argue my fine, I, we brought that up, and I said, geez, I don't even, you know, we wouldn't issue these liquor permits if they weren't paid. That's fine. We all smiled and said, oh, wait a minute, there's a mechanism in place. None of us have been talking to each other.
The board directed Tom to talk to Mr. Steinhardt because we didn't want to talk to the council.
No, it's all good, but so there is a mechanism there for the liquor ones, not so much...
We're here today to explain why we wanted to go to town council, because we don't have, we need some clout, number one.
Yeah.
And so Carl said, come and see you, so we're here.
Right.
And we sent a number of letters, Tom has documentation, three in all.
Yes.
The third one was certified.
Yep, and they signed for them.
They signed for them, and they still didn't pay.
Yep.
I understand today, the last, was it the last one paid, the bakery?
Fine.
The fine, but she hasn't paid for, she still hasn't paid the fee for the license.
Back up the bakery in the center of town.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Or she paid one of them.
Or was it the coffee place?
No, so the coffee place.
Bakery.
I went to the select office for the clerk's office.
I visited everybody today.
The clerk's office today, and they said that that place has a...
They have other issues?
No, that they have some kind of fee schedule with the clerk.
They do, yes.
Payment schedule.
I understand, then we're going to, if they pay their fee license, then we will release... Michelle was the one that told us to hold the license because they hadn't paid their taxes.
Correct.
So now she put them on a payment plan, so we can release, I found that out today.
Right.
And so we'll release the license if they pay the fee.
Right, and they did. They came in and paid their fee today.
Happy.
Yep. And there are another one, so I had them produced today. I went and visited, I have a packet here of everyone that you guys had issues with. I met some great people in this town that I haven't talked to in years. You know, the working, you know, I don't even know how to say it. I got to almost bake bread at one place. I had another guy give me a hundred dollar bills, like they were candy, and if I had a kitten I was petting it, I thought I'd be in the mob, but I didn't know my cat would be, so I didn't take the hundreds. I let him keep his money. He'd love that, I knew he'd love that. So, but, and every one of them, of course, embarrassed, absolutely embarrassed that they're talking to some guy named Joe Dede who owns Moolish, who today has the selectmen badge on, going, what do you mean? You know?
They don't.
It's all good.
They knew their license was due on January first.
Sure they do, but so in most of these cases...
And we don't need, I don't need to change them, neither do you.
No, I don't need to, but like two of them just left, both American Legion and VFW.
Correct.
Correct, so, so like I explained to you on the phone, somebody signs for it, doesn't mean it actually gets to a guy that writes the check, they're volunteers. They're not making up excuses one bit, they're not.
I'm fine with it.
I just smile and say, I see where the disconnect can happen. And both of those folks, you know, they pulled out their checks today and said, how much do we owe you? I'll know tomorrow. So tomorrow, all of this, other than one, will be cleaned up for you. And all it took was to say, hey, how you doing? And I know it's not your job, I get it. It's easier to write a letter, send it, and see if someone ever even opens their visa. I don't read my Board of Health mail, and that's why I paid the fine. I don't. Well, and it's not bad. I'm closed that time of year, I didn't look at it, shame on Joe.
The point I'm here today is that we don't want this to happen in the next January.
I don't want it to happen either.
So something needs to...
So we're going to form, we're going to have a party in December, and all these guys that, we all laughed and said, you know, we'll all get together with our checks and get them in on goddamn time. It's so simple.
When, when do you have to have the money in? Is it December thirtieth?
The same as everybody?
December thirty first. So it's a simple process.
It is, right.
But what we're going to do is make sure you've got...
Coordinate, yeah.
Other than that?
Coordinate.
Don't not issue the liquor license.
Yeah.
And that'll take care of it.
Again, it wasn't a problem until fairly recently, that's why we didn't have to come to you.
You don't have to have a due for thirty first.
Absolutely, yeah.
Cindy can show the new secretary how to do their timing of the paperwork, so it'll match her timing of our paperwork.
Well, she knows, Melissa's on a high-staffed diet, she's kept up.
She has, but...
But it's more than just liquor licenses, because you can have food establishments that are not liquor-related.
Right.
They're under a different, called common victualism.
Which we issue, so.
Well, that's pretty true, right.
And Cindy has the...
Have I always been contacted?
Right.
Maybe Melissa didn't know to contact me about the liquor ones.
Well, it doesn't matter, doesn't matter. We've resolved it.
Yeah.
And maybe when she sends out the letter, whether it's liquor or not, she puts in the language down at the bottom of the letter, failure to pay this could result in no license.
I would guess.
If you read it. If you read it.
If you open it.
If you even open it. I didn't open mine. I should have used the excuse that the mail didn't deliver.
You get some German wine lagers.
You know? I said I should have done, saved me a hundred and fifty bucks.
Sounds like that's, that's resolved.
And honestly, when do you guys actually mail? So other than this year, do you send them December first?
Yeah, we send them, we send them by December, yeah.
Right, so maybe we should back that up two weeks, you know, a little earlier.
November fifteenth, fine.
Yeah, just because...
I have to mail it before November, because they have to be, they have to sign their renewal in November.
Yeah, we can do that. We can get them out there.
And it's, and if pricing stays the same, you're not under gun...
No, we're not going to, I don't believe that we're going to raise our fees again this year.
Right.
My guess.
That hiccup won't happen, you never know.
A lot of the liquor people pick them up before December thirty first, too.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, because they need them.
Well, my assuming that if they said, well, where's your, if your Board of Health person's not here, then you don't get your liquor.
That's right.
Simple as that, that's fine. Or you can have them on the same form.
You will have a fine.
Go to the different boards.
They'll all be in...
They're all in the same office.
Yeah, they'll be in quick.
On a related...
That's an easy fix.
Right, I agree with you. On a related issue, Randy's here, we're working on the FOG program and the fats oils and grease program.
Yes.
For inspections and/or pumping, and it's going to involve food service licenses, again, for food service establishments.
Right.
One of the reasons that we wanted to speak to town council was to have a protocol that we could utilize in the event that we have problems in the future with that, with that program, because they're going to be, there's going to be quarterly inspections in either pumping or not pumping, depending on the results of the inspection. And then there would be the issue of them, if they don't comply, the possibility of the Board of Health withholding their food establishment license. So even though we've solved this problem, we're potentially going to have to deal with this.
Right, there's more stuff coming.
In the future, just FYI. Randy and I are working on that program right now.
Randy, did that consultant give you model template letters for boards of health or DPW to send out to the restaurants that would need to comply with the new regs?
We have, I can share, I have a packet on my desk, it's probably this thing, but there's information we can send to residents, you know, or businesses, public information knowledge.
Right.
Right, but also...
Policies, we can use this draft, or we want to adopt.
Yeah, but ultimately, as the doctor just mentioned earlier, that our authority, even though we can pull and close a restaurant for non-payment of fees, that's in the regulations, the actually doing that requires court activity.
Right.
So we just can't do that, you know, latterly. We have to, and that, as you know, can be very expensive. So if we can avoid that, having a clean mechanism to compel people to do that without having to resort to the onerous and expensive task of having to go to court, I think it would serve everybody's best interest, including the sources.
Yeah. So where do we stand with the act of going to town council? Is the bakery, they only paid their fine and not their permit, so they're still out in limbo, is that correct?
I would have to check. I was, I was out today in the field.
Regardless.
Per test, though.
It'll all be resolved tomorrow morning, that I can promise. You can call me tomorrow at five and scream from the Dallas Mountain.
No, that's fine, I'm just fine and dandy.
But, yeah. And actually, I had a great time. I got to meet some people I did not know.
They're all very nice people.
Yep, they're the working backs of America, every one of them, but great people.
Good, exactly.
So this grease deal, so there's legislation that says it has to be done four times a year?
Well, it's...
Or is it our version of four times a year?
Randy will be able to speak to that better than I can at this point.
Yeah, and is it only for people on sewers or...
It's in your regulation, it's in your regulation that you adopted, but that can be modified.
Modified.
I think the point is, we're digressing a little bit, but I think good...
No, I know where it's coming from, and I understand why we're doing it. I was part of the...
Yeah, but the thing about four times a year, that could be flexible. Your regulations say that, but you could, you could change your regulations to reflect...
And are we talking about just sewer users?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's, we're really talking...
That's where you see it, right?
Well, that's where Randy sees it. He's had issues with that.
Gotcha. Yeah, we have. Yeah, we're still having issues.
That's the whole purpose of it.
Probably know, yeah.
But my, my guess is that the...
No, no, I always, I ask, sir, is I do get mine pumped out quite a bit.
Yeah, because you're responsible.
And I guess, right, and if I didn't do it, then my septic would fail, and I'd find out real quickly where the sewers, it's your issue because it's going downstream. Yeah, gotcha. Right. Okay, so that was that, and what was the second one? There was three items. The number two was...
That was a tax issue.
A tax issue, which one is cleaned up, and the other one, we're going to have to look at that.
Make, right.
And they'll be in this week to figure their issues out.
Okay, good.
So...
Good luck.
I'm fine, are you fine?
Doug?
Questions?
Carl?
Questions, concerns? Nothing?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, and they all said hi, every one of them?
Sure.
They did. They said hi. Yep. I said, I don't know if he's still doctor age or not doctor age. When you're retired, are you still a doctor or how's that work? You know? What's this? Oh, this is what's next?
Yeah.
Right here too, right? Yeah. Can you pull this on me?
Yeah, that's the original.
Oh, original. All right. Should we wait for the press to come back or is he busy talking about food establishments? Interesting.
From the building inspector.
Yep. I met with the building inspector. I met with Mr. Wally today. I met with everybody.
Yep, Mr. Wally came in to see me and.
Yep. It's all good.
And I spoke to the town planner and there's.
Yep. All the issues that were brought forward, so for any motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're discussing the property, let's go, let's look it up here. Four, five, four College Highway. Oh, is it? Good. Thanks for reminding me. I knew that was gonna happen too.
Walt's Garage.
Walt's Garage, there you go.
South Wick Inn.
South Wick Inn. Thank you, Mr. Clerk for that update.
Why we're here.
Keeping me informed. Shoes came out good too, by the way. No problem. All right, so we, the Dr. Building Inspector, the fencing issue in the back has been resolved. It's actually been taken out. And should they decide to ever put something back up? The bicycle fences, what we all recommended. They understood completely and if no one's cutting through all the time, they probably won't go back up. The issue with cars parking tight to the building, building inspector did look at that and found no objections to parking as detailed on the plan.
Very good.
So we opened the meeting. Do we need to close the meeting before we vote on it?
Yeah, you want to close the hearing.
I'm sorry, hearing. Okay.
You've already taken public comment unless you want to continue.
Anybody else have public comment about it? Thank you. Need a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And now I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Lieutenant Bishop a question?
You can attend.
I was told today that if someone cuts through property. That, right. That you can issue. Okay.
I've noticed it too in the past, but it's mostly cops doing it. What happens when a cruiser does it? Well, I don't know. I don't see the lights on. I just see, I see a donut and I see the coffee. I don't know. They're leaving Dunkin' or what they're doing.
That's the green El Camino.
All right, because we, we had, we, that was one of the issues and I suggested to the board.
It was not a decorative fence.
That possibly.
Crime scene tape.
If, if, if there was a real issue, maybe we could be more visible. But then somebody also pointed out that that's happening at Rite Aid, you know?
Oh, sure, the zip code from Chevelle's.
Through Mobile.
Yeah.
And then now that we got construction on Congamon Road, they're cutting through McDonald's, you know, so. Okay.
Yeah. All right.
And until he learns about that budget thing.
Yeah. And he will. All right, so we're done with that. We're done with Southwick Motors.
Thank you.
Uh, payable warrants, acknowledged payroll warrant.
Did it come, son?
One, eight, two, nine dated six, eleven, eighteen in the amount of.
See, this having a meeting on Monday is throwing us all off.
I can see this. Literally. Can we operate another week without approving it?
Well, the, the, you've designated Russ to sign off on it anyway. It just acknowledges it. He actually approves it.
I will take care of it, Mr. Chairman.
Wonderful. So next up is regular session minutes, six, four, eighteen.
Executive.
I'm sorry, executive for six, four, eighteen. Well, the other one's not.
Yeah, both.
Well.
Regular's not ready.
Yeah, regular's not.
Not ready. But we're not gonna let it get too far behind. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. No, it's someone's phone, but it's not mine.
It's not mine.
All right, so now we're gonna go to the action items. We took care of the food establishment and serving licenses. Notification of donation from the Gran, from Granville for school track AED project.
Awesome.
Isn't that something?
Yep.
Thousand bucks, right?
Thousand dollars. Can we send them a, no, we don't have to send them a thank you note, right?
Can hold up our invasion, I guess.
Yeah. Okay. We'll stand down?
Yeah, stand down for a while.
A thousand dollars?
Just for a month.
A month. Yeah, that's wonderful.
I think that's commendable that they.
Did a great job there, Russ.
They met our challenge and that is cooperation and.
Above and beyond.
Above and beyond. I certainly thank them.
Yes. That's wonderful. All right, next up is the CDBG City Town Owner Agreement for seventy-six Bungalow. So what do we need on this, Carl? Just a motion?
Yeah, they have this.
Motion for the chairman to sign.
Work to be done at their house, so the chair has to be authorized to sign it.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Pass out the Sunday, please. Oh, this is a nice one. So three A is a resignation of Sean Basalani? Basaloni? Basilia? Oh, I didn't get that out of that. From the Historic Commission. So we have to accept it of a motion or we just?
Yeah, because you're the opponent.
Need a motion to accept the resignation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that one that we need to post or is that a, or is that a?
Oh, I forgot to read it.
Yeah, you do need to post it.
No.
No, thank you.
Not required.
Okay, because that was a good one to read. That was a, that's a good one.
So who's having a bad day?
Oof.
Are we gonna get a certificate for Sean?
I don't know if he wants.
I don't think Sean wants the certificate. But yes, like all, like all great past employees and everyone else, we give them certificates. So we need, we need one for the other department too there. So, yeah. Spin one up. All right. So should we post for that now, Carl, while we're talking about it?
Yeah, I, yeah, Cindy, we've had openings on that board before too, EDC. So this, this, that one and then you have one. You have Park and Rec.
Okay.
Right?
As long as we're aware. Four A is a letter from the Southwick Civic Fund, which is me and my posse. And it's basically, yeah, Russ, you can read it.
All right, we have a letter from the Southwick Civic Fund. They're a nonprofit organization that, they're taking on the challenge of raising twelve thousand dollars for fireworks that would be shot off on July twenty-first. It, that's the same evening of the parade that the One Call Away Foundation does. And I think last year we made a donation to the fireworks fund. I don't think it was to the Civic Fund, but the fireworks fund. I can't remember the amount.
I can't either.
Well, you just probably make a motion for whatever it was.
Um, okay. So I. I'd make a motion to, to the same donation to the Southwick Civic Fund. I'd need a second.
I'd gladly second the motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'll stay.
In one of stench.
Thank you, folks. I'll put a firecracker with your name on it, Russ. It'll be, it'll be low to the ground, so it's like a sparkler. You'll have to look down the stairs. But needless to say, you'll light up my life that day. All right.
Good times.
It's a, is it, it is a.
July twenty-first.
Yeah, July twenty-first. Resignation. Okay, notice of vacancy on Park and Rec. So how do we handle this one, Carl? Do we appoint from this board?
No.
No, because it's an elected board, Mr. Chairman. The protocol on that goes under your process.
Yeah, I saw all this paper, but you could be the easy bird.
Basically, you would post for it and then you'd get together with the remaining members.
Okay.
Of the Park and Recreation Commission and yourselves. And you would interview the candidates and then you would, as a group, you would do a, you know, a roll call.
Yep.
Motion to appoint somebody and then they would only be there till next May's election.
Correct, they serve up one year.
Unlike the school district, which actually serves the remainder of the term.
All right.
Because that's.
They are the exception. The rule is to the next election, generally speaking.
That's because the regional agreement set forth that other problem.
Correct.
So do we need to make a motion to post?
Yep.
So moved.
Do we have to accept the resignation first?
No.
No, elected people resigned to the town.
Then I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we add it to the postings. All right, six A, Southwick Volunteer Agreement Form.
Yep, this came out of Fred's office and it's just, we're gonna have volunteers or interns and people of that nature that would have to sign this agreement.
Which one? I thought one was cute here. I understand that I may be asked to perform useful activities in the office area that will complement the work of a town paid employee, but that I will not be used as an unpaid laborer to perform the work routines ordinarily performed by paid staff. Does that mean the kid can't dig the hole? That's cute. I thought it was cute. All right.
They can, as long as they don't displace personnel.
Right. Right. That personnel can sit and watch, we just can't send them home.
No. What it means is that no one is going to lose their job.
Correct.
Or result in a part-time unemployment.
Right.
Because you're using volunteers.
Right.
So that's what it means.
And that's straightforward labor law.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, most of this was taken straight out of the Fair Labor Standards Act and we sent advisories from the Fair Labor Standards Act regarding this issue to come.
Thank you. You gentlemen, read it?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion first reading.
This isn't really a policy, Fred. It's a form, right?
Form.
Yeah. It's not like you have discretion over it.
All right, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, six A going your way. All right, so up next is gonna be the boards and staff appointments and we're gonna table it till next week.
Right, Cindy's finalizing.
Do I need a motion to table?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, emergency procurement for DPW well water repair. Was it eight slash two town code?
Chapter eight dash two of the town code sets forth the process and Randy had explained the reason why, what had happened with the, the well. And so this would be voted on not only by your board, but it will also be brought up at the next finance committee meeting.
Okay.
For them to also vote on it. And it, it doesn't happen that often. It's a rare occurrence, but it does happen. And the director has submitted the information that he believes trips that threshold.
What do you think hap? Yeah, I am. What do you think happened there, Randy?
Not quite sure. Um, we've had a lot of trouble down there several times trying to troubleshoot the issue. Just failed.
Yeah.
There's a drive a little down the road.
How old was it?
Uh, the pump station itself is an old ten years old. So it's unusual that it happened so quickly.
Is it?
I don't think so, yeah. But fortunately he's.
He's out of warranty?
Out of warranty. Uh, it's not easy to find the parts either.
Really?
We thought we had one in Wisconsin. And those got gobbled up before I could make the whole call. So we're looking at getting a new drive in the end of the week.
Okay. I read everything. Yeah. Any questions?
No. So does this apply also to the enterprise funds as well under this section?
Yeah, this is a procurement issue. That's regardless of funds list.
Very well.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I mean, they, they have, it's not a FinCon reserve, Doug. Doug, it's not a request from the FinCon reserve.
Right.
We have one available.
Right.
When's the finance committee meeting next? No problem. But they can do it over the phone and then just reaffirm their vote?
No, I mean, if the.
Power off.
The chairman to the vice chairman would be enough, but it, it has to be done.
Okay.
Oh, no, yes.
Yeah, we know that, but I just, I just.
Yeah.
Didn't want a technical. Okay, you're taking care of that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll stop.
Okay. All right, ten A is a, or. How do I use that one? So up ten A is to do with our quotes for landscaping and snow for our sidewalks. Uh, the libraries.
Municipal buildings.
Right, did I just skip over chapter ninety?
Nine A.
Yeah, you just.
Sorry about that, guys. Nine A. Chapter ninety. All right. From Randy Brown to the select board, proposes to follow chapter ninety funds project for four hundred and sixty-six thousand for the upcoming year. So basically, Randy, this is how we want to spend that money. Right?
You need to realize that last week Randy had already brought forward two other projects, so you've already put those in motion.
Yes. And this, and we have this funds in there.
Right, these are more monies in, in the balances.
Right, which we have available.
Yes.
Point Grove Road Drainage Improvements. Congamon Road Storm Water Treatment Units, which isn't covered by the project they're doing out there now. Uh, Coles Hill Road slash Hillside Road Drainage and Road Realignments. Uh, fifty thousand. Uh, crack ceiling, seventy thousand. There's some roads listed there. Gran, Granville Road Culvert for forty-five thousand, which is going on to the other part of that project.
The short lift.
The short lift, yep.
No, no, that's a culvert that was approved, not me.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the four twenty-two at the special. You already approved the other money to balance the short lift last week.
Right. Cold-in-place paving on Hillside Road and South Long Yard Road. What's cold-in-place mean?
Great question. So it's a newer technique. Um, it's not a full replacement, but what they're utilizing is the existing asphalt and they're actually adding asphalt. They're adding liquid asphalt and adding stone to it and creating a new.
So they're scraping it, heating it, reprocessing and putting it back down?
Exactly. No, one, one full suit, so.
Oh, they grind it as they go along?
They're gonna, they're gonna spread the salt, they're gonna spread the sand, uh, stone and the liquid asphalt on the existing asphalt. There's a milling machine that comes behind it, grinds it all up, makes into a slurry in the paving machine, the paving box basically alone.
Just like the cartoons. Yeah.
And then afterwards you come back with a specific force. We usually add like one or two half circles on top of it.
Really?
South Long Yard from where to where?
Uh, there's a section up there, it is.
That would be the missing section, pretty much?
The bad section.
The bad part of South Long Yard, yep.
And, and thank you for asking, because I was gonna look up cold-in-place later. That's a, thank you. That's a great answer.
Yeah, it looks.
It's a great answer.
Love to know when you're doing that out there, because I'd love to just take a peek at it.
Now, are we doing these two roads, Randy, because they are in better shape and this process would work better on those sections? Other than like, like George Loomis or Klein Road?
Uh, so there, there's a curb, right, a paving curb, right? So there is a section on the curb where I would agree that George Loomis, Klein Road are too far down the curb or this one.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of like the next level up.
Right.
A step above what those roads.
So the road has to be in.
Better shape.
Semi-decent.
Semi, but not, not.
Right. Okay.
This is knock your teeth loose. That's knock your teeth out.
Out, okay. I was just trying to clarify.
No, I, and I know exactly.
So those other roads, you'd have to just pave them.
Right.
Those require more extensive, you know, full depth reconstruction.
Well, if, if we couldn't do the full depth reconstruction, but we wanted to address, you know, some of the complaints of the neighbors and, and, and emergency vehicles getting to certain areas, would we, as we have in the past, previous to you being the DPW, just pave over some of these?
That's a waste of money, you could ask me. And the road is only as good as the foundation. It's like your house.
Yeah.
Or else it's good as the foundation. The foundation are shot in all those roads. There's no drainage, there's no, the, the, the sub basis is important issue. So it may get you a year or two, but it's gonna look just like it looks now in three years.
Well, I'm just, the reason why I mention this, you, you look at College Highway where they just paved not too many years ago and it's really falling apart, but they made a judgment call to pave it, you know, to address issues and to provide a safe road even if it was for a temporary thing. And I'm kind of wondering on some of these secondary roads, and, and I, I know what you're saying about the foundation, but some of these secondary roads, I look at my road when we just did Stone and Oils back in the seventies. You know, we went twenty some odd years before anybody even thought about putting a, a code over that. Is it the best? No, but, uh, I mean, I look at George Loomis and I look at Klein and, and the sections of Vining Hill. I mean, there's not gonna be a road there next year. And I don't know if we got the money to do the whole process. I, I know what you're saying, Randy, but I don't know if we're going to have enough money to do full road reconstructions on these roads.
Well, we don't have the money.
Right.
Because, not in a bad way, but it's four hundred grand to do Klein, right? Four to five?
I would say Klein Road is still five hundred thousand dollars.
There you go. So in a perfect, right, so.
And then there's a culvert, there's a culvert, that's kind of.
Right.
Yeah, so.
But I, I look at Nicholson Hill. You know, we got a quote, it was gonna be two hundred, two hundred and fifty, and we quit at, at a half a million dollars. And I look at Klein Road, I bet you, I, I don't think you're gonna do it for a half a million dollars.
Well, Bugbee was your last big one over four hundred and fifty.
And Bugbee's just a short, short little road.
But the last time we met, we, we talked about, one of the roads we had done in the nineties, full depth reclamation was Hillside Road. And here it is, has to be done over again. So it's like, well, if you're gonna get twenty years, twenty to twenty-two years out of full depth reclamation, and you can just mill and grind something and get fifteen years out of it. Somewhere, there's another cost benefit analysis, but it's, it's not showing up the way we thought it would with these, these different plans when I look at that other road and how that's.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna get fifteen out of a mill and all that.
No, I was just gonna say, I think you're at four or five, right?
Even a full depth reconstruction, you know, with the condition, you know, you're probably looking at fifteen, twenty years max on a brand new road.
With full depth?
So that's like Bobby Road, I mean, fifteen, twenty years max. And then we're gonna continue doing periodic maintenance, probably crack ceiling on that road over the years. Keep it in, in, in good condition. But it's not, it's not a, it, it comes down to our pavement program, which we have.
Right, and I know we're following the beta, beta system.
Well, we sort of follow it, but the, the program says we need to spend up here, and we're way down here.
Right.
So we need to fix that gap, that's an issue.
That's one, I think that's going to be a very big topic for budget season this year, too, and, and taking into account.
That's a gap that every town has.
Yeah, I know, but we also have to take into account the life expectancy of some of these roads, right, as to how you finance and fund those types of projects, right? So maybe that's something to take a look at. We, we've taken some very large expenses on over the last few years. We also have some debt that's rolling off at the end of, if not this year, next year, that we could look at. Some of that, for, for some of these larger projects that need to be undertaken, without providing, you know, a wallop to the tax rate. So the timing might be conducive to look at that.
Yeah, that's more around twenty, twenty, let's see, nineteen, twenty, twenty or something, because.
But by the time you do the designs and.
We get some rolling off, which is going to make the principal payments for the fire apparatus and the new dump truck. And then, so the year after, that becomes permanent financing. So the year after that, that'll be rolling off.
Could I, you know, I'm going to throw this out here, and you can say no if you want. Could we do a, get a cost figure to do like a George Loomis, or to do parts of Vining Hill Road that are deteriorating, things like that, just to pave over it? And see what that cost is. And, and it's similar to what you did, Randy, on Sunnyside Road. We took thirty thousand dollars and we spent it to do a patch. And what I'm suggesting is, if we can get a cost figure, you know, because, and I'm not talking about doing the complete roads, but there's sections of these roads that, they're not going to be roads much longer. And, and I know we're not going to have the money, because I'm being realistic, we're not going to have the money
No.
to do all these roads, uh, full depth re, you know. So that would be my suggestion to the board, that we request the DPW to, uh, get us some cost figures on doing some partial paving on bad areas of, of some of these roads. Yeah.
You can bang that out, though, can't you roughly get numbers for that?
No, but I'm, I'm trying to follow the pavement management program, which we all,
No, no.
we all sat down and agreed that we were going to follow.
Right.
And just kind of re-skimming off that a little bit, so.
No, there's, there's two spots that, was it a hundred feet long, fifty feet long?
Right, right. I, I mean.
The program is the most cost-effective way for us to manage our.
And, and we, and we are trying to do that, Randy, but at the same token, we, we, we deviated on, on Sunnyside Road. Right?
Well, that was a, that was a.
Well, and, and I, what I'm saying is, these are safety issues on these roads. Uh, so, I mean, I want to continue following the beta plan, because I'm the one that brought it back from MMA, so I kind of think it's my baby, and I don't want it to die. But at the same token, we got some safety issues, and I'm not talking about complete roads, I'm talking about some really bad sections where we, I think we need to do some patches.
Well, we're doing patches, that's all.
No, I'm talking about letting Lane go in, or whoever got the, who's getting the bid this year, and let them do sections.
I can get your numbers.
Okay, yeah.
But I'll tell them here, right now, the road is going to fall apart again. So it's, my mind is wasting good asphalt on a bad road.
Well, again, not to beat a dead horse.
And I understand that, I do.
We, we've, we've done patching before, and, and some of these roads, let's face it, they don't have that high traffic count. I look at some, like, some of these small subdivisions, like Jeffrey Circle and things like that. Now, they haven't been touched in thirty or forty years, right? And that was, they didn't do a, a very good job putting in a base on those subdivisions, but they don't have the heavy traffic. So they lasted thirty or forty years, so.
Yeah, they put up with them, yeah.
Right. Anyways, I hear what you're saying, Randy, and not trying to be argumentative, I just know that we don't have the money to do it the right way. So I think we need to do some patching before somebody gets hurt.
Well, I think part of our problem is, we've spent a lot of money on design stuff and doing culverts, so next year we ought to be focusing on just roads.
But.
I wouldn't plan on any culverts next year.
Yeah, but to be a quality, it's right behind it, you know, it's.
Yeah.
They're both issues.
You've got to stop putting the money back in the roads, converting some of the dirt roads that have cost us. We, we're behind because of a series of other policy decisions. So now we've got to stop putting the money back to.
Half the money.
Yeah.
That's, you know.
Yeah.
And I.
You don't get a return on that.
No. But we got to, like you said, I mean, I tried the last two years, between talking, I would say, I'd say Bob's last name.
Ratchek.
Ratchek. You know, we spent time with coffee, and just trying to, you know, how can we get four hundred grand more a year to Randy for ten years? You know, and two years in a row, now we sat down just before the budget ends, and, you know, tried in vain, got nowhere. But, and I'm not, you know, that's just two guys having coffee trying to solve the world's problems, and we're not sitting at Miss Murphy's. You know, but, uh, and I've been, reached out to Randy both years in a row, too, and I'm sure he smiles, he gets like, not what's he want? You're going to promise me the moon and I don't come through, but.
Eh.
But we are looking, and you're right, this year we need to really just, we're going to have to bite that bullet.
Yep.
Somewhere.
And even if.
But the last two years you have done that. You put, you put
No.
three hundred toward the Shertliff Small Bridge Program.
We have.
And having not got that grant for five,
Absolutely.
you wouldn't have been leveraging it with the other three.
Right.
To do the project, because that would still be sitting there.
I agree.
And then, and then this year, the other four hundred and twenty-two for the.
Right. But like I had said to Randy, if I could say, I'm going to show you.
What's going to be roads?
No, I'm going to show you, Randy, five, four hundred grand more a year for five years, where, what roads can we do? And then he can actually, so as we have this discussion about George Loomis, he could have said, actually, three, year three from now, I have that planned, because you, this board found you four hundred grand more a year for the next five years, and we are doing George Loomis, it is on the list, but he can't do that, he can smile and say, you're wasting money. And he's right. So that's all I'm getting at, is, we need the bigger picture. We, we, we talk about it all the time we can. We're going to finally have to do something, and begin, you need the tools to do it, right? You need the money to have the tools.
Yeah, I just don't.
You know.
And, and even if some of the projects, like a, like a Vining Hill Road project, you know, maybe it's two phases, or three phases.
Right.
You know, I know with the drainage, it gets complicated as to how you phase something like that, when you want to do drainage. You know, the drainage is going to run over, you know, maybe you can't just lop off Vining Hill Road, it'll be a section of it. You know, I hate to bring up our neighbors to the south, because they're in worse
And they are, right.
financial shape than they are, but they're doing more of that, right? You drive a road and all of a sudden they, they do a quarter mile of a road, and they did the whole thing. You know, they put drainage, they do section, they, they full depth, and they pave it. And maybe that was the worst spot, and it screws up the beta as far as, because now how, you got to start splitting up roads into quarters and thirds and tenths of a mile, I don't know. But, you know, given the financial situation, I, you know, we may have to just look at that to see if we can, you know, pick the, you know, when we joked about South Longair, and I said the missing part, I mean, there is a bad section of South Longair that's going, he's going to do, it's great. And, and this process is probably going to be awesome. But, you know, if, if that was a road in need of really full depth reclamation, and, and we even did that last year, we, we, you were able to get the state to come and fix just the, the head into Southwick at the Agawam line, right? Because that was a disaster, right? And we kind of tortured, they just did that one section. Yeah, they were working on the other section further, further west, but they only did that one little, we may have to do parts of Vining Hill Road, or Klein, or, or, or other roads, just in that manner. It may not be the most efficient from a cost perspective, because there's a lot of cost in marshaling and getting out there and, and doing everything else, but, you know, I think that that, that's something to look at, as well as, you know, we may have to look at, you know, for some of the roads that are really a disaster. But I agree with you, I don't want to see, you know, good money thrown after bad, we just put down pavement that's going to be gone in very short order. But, you know, in some cases, it may be appropriate. But the, the, the longer we continue to kick the can, so what you're alluding to, and we are saying, is, the more we're going to fall behind the beta, and this problem doesn't get, it gets exponentially worse. Right? Because if you, if you're not spending the money doing shims and overlays, that brings the full depth on, so it has to bring on the full depth reclamation sooner. For roads that were due that we didn't do, now it's just, they're going to deteriorate faster, I think. So we're going to have to continue to look at this and, you know, continue to have a discussion on the way to do it. You know, this year was, you know, there was a couple of fire trucks, you know, next, you know, this year we'll see what's going on, and then next, you know, the following as debt, you know, we retire some, some previous debt. That, from my perspective, that should be the area of focus. I mean, those, those roads are an asset to the town, they're very important to everyone, everyone drives on them. And also, you have to look at them financially, just like a fire truck. They have a thirty-year life, right? Twenty-five year, at least, you look at them that way, and you should fund those that way, too. Right? We didn't go and just buy a fire engine for cash for a million bucks. We know that's got a twenty-five year life, we need to look at, you know, a road the same way.
Randy, these, some of these things, these drainage improvements
Yeah.
on Point Grove and Coast Hill, are they on the beta plan?
No, those are, these are, these are drainage problems.
All right.
So these are addressing flooding and icing issues at those locations.
Could those, could those monies for one year be redirected to paving, some of more linear feet of paving for a road on your beta plan?
It could, but my recommendation is, I mean, for, these are, these are safety issues, these locations, they're drainage issues. They have ice issues, especially on the Coast Hill, and it's the Rose Hill Side Road intersection. You drive down there, that was, these locations, we had to go every morning, we had to scrape ice off that road, every morning. Water comes off the hill, and ice is off the road.
Right, it's got nowhere to go, and it goes over.
Was any of that Mass Highway responsibility on Coast Hill Road?
Mass Highway, why?
In other words, is any of this at the bottom, going toward College Highway, or this is just all up at the top?
This is up at hillside.
All at the top?
Yeah.
It's the intersection. A couple of feet on either side, but there's the drainage coming off the hill.
You ever see a tractor trailer trying to take a turn to get in?
Yeah, down in the big truck, it's no fun.
Yeah. All right, so we need to approve this? Nine A, do you need a motion to approve it?
The four sixty-six part.
The four sixty-six. Need a motion to approve four hundred and sixty-six thousand for, for this upcoming year for the projects in front of us.
And then what you do is, those other roads you want to do, when we go back to town meeting next spring, the Road Commission will determine which roads it wants to pave, because paving is going to be the priority.
What's the Point Grove Road one, the very first one?
Uh, it's.
They just paved veteran, like, two days ago.
Well, it's now, it's just a little further down from the center. It was just imploding right around the curb there.
Is this going to use, is up all the chapter ninety money?
Um, he's going to have about thirty thousand left in chapter ninety, and then there's the chapter ninety local share fund, so he's going to have fifty thousand left over there. And then he's got about another hundred for general fund paving. We got a one eighty on July first.
So we, in addition to this, we have the possibility of a hundred and fifty thousand that we could use for paving, patching?
No, because they, they, that's used for pothole monies and other repairs.
We're going to use it for paving and other general construction.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, I can go get the budget and show you all the other line items and the, the dollar values.
What I'm trying to.
Want to leave a little bit of money, room left, so should something come up, I can do it.
Right, I'm, you know.
I understand.
Again, you're the DPW director, and we're going to
So.
back as much as we possibly can. I'm just concerned about certain areas of roads, that I think we need to do some, some, some shimming or patching, like we did on, on Sunnyside Road.
Yeah, we used to have Dranby come in with their shimming machine, their, their box.
But you're saying there would be, Randy, some additional funds that you think you would be able to use?
Yeah, probably just, yeah, they're, they're, we just went for them.
Okay. I'll make a motion
Thank you.
for this.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just ask Russ which streets, in particular, is it Klein and Loomis?
I, what, what I would look at, Randy, there's a section on Vining Hill Road, you know, uh, from like Davis up to, what, More Vinny, that's, that's breaking apart. And then George Loomis, you know, you've got several sections on that. And then Klein Road, probably the, the worst part is from, uh, South Loomis up to the top. You know, that first snow, you know?
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Ten A is going to be FY nineteen landscape service quotes.
Bobby went out for quotes for everything, and he did walkthroughs, and we got the, the quotes in, and he's recommending in the letter before you, Tynick for the townwide, all for all the buildings.
Yep.
And then he's recommending Total Home Services for the, uh, snow removal at the library.
Okay. Any questions?
Who was doing the, who was doing that last year?
Uh, last three years was, um, Clean Cock.
Okay.
They didn't submit a call.
They didn't submit a call. And there's, I believe, came in lower than what we were paying. Not by a lot.
They're right along the same.
But, but they are lower.
And, and just a footnote.
Yep.
You know, because I know we've been very busy, uh, but it, it makes me get it back on track. The Old Town Library, if you see the cost of that in here, you know, I think we need to move on, whether it be a lease or selling of the building, and
Absolutely.
get going on that.
Yeah.
You know.
It's on your goals and objectives to make the decision.
Well, you see, it's a few thousand dollars there, it's a few thousand dollars for the, you know.
On the insurance.
Insurance.
The first, our highest bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you look at the plow, yeah.
Yep, just adds to the reason why we want to
Right.
do something with that property.
Right. I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of Mr. Johnson.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for transparency, I do use Tynick landscaping to mow my place. Just so you know. I just. Sorry. I don't want to hear about it later.
Probably.
Well, I will anyways, yeah, no, it's the start of my life. That's all good. I enjoy the argument. All right, water pump station design amendment, eleven. All right, so in front of us, we're going to redo, this is the one we're redoing by, uh, Westford Line?
That's correct, this is the article at town meeting, two articles for this, uh, post for the town meeting. So this is the design amendment for the, the new.
Right, so the design's already going to, the finances have already been approved at town meeting. And you're letting us know it's going to be, uh, fifty thousand for the design consultant engineer?
Would show that's twelve A, right?
Oh, I'm at eleven A.
They're out of order.
I'm sorry.
They're out of order for the agenda.
So what would you like me?
Twelve A.
Thank you.
Right.
Sorry, guys.
That's all right, just try it.
It's a letter with.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Say you're not numbered right.
It's a, it's a weird week this week.
You just need a motion to sign this one, right?
Need a motion to approve.
Yeah, approved it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one's interesting, actually.
Yeah, the next one.
Eleven A.
Hey, eleven A.
Right.
Yeah?
Well, eleven A, you had already, um, given him, um.
His court is out of order. You're out of order.
Site readiness.
All right. So another one from Randy Brown, mass development site, writing this program. It looks like we can apply for a grant up to fifty thousand, which we use for consultants slash engineer to study and develop recommendations to improve our infrastructure and marketability of our project.
For the industrial parks.
The industrial parks. DPW seeking support. There's a process.
Which is a good thing.
It's a good thing. I didn't read that yet. It's in Drive, West Drive and Industrial Road. All right, so what do you need from us, Randy?
Just your, uh, blessing to move forward with this grant application.
All right, okay. No fees involved to move forward, right, other than your time and effort like usual?
There's no risk.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Well, good luck, Randy.
Hey, Ken, so, so the land that the, the state took for Route Fifty-seven that are never going to expand, right? It comes up the hill into Southwick, and on the left, if you're coming into Southwick, what's your, uh, that, that farm they took on the left of the house, coming into Southwick, Southwick line
Yeah.
on the left, that was a house there. There was a lot of acreage, right?
Well, you had, well, Sleepers was across the road, then, then you had, uh, Christ, I can't think of their names.
Right, but there was some acreage there.
You worked on that with Danny Keenan.
A few, a few acres, I can't remember, can't remember.
Oh, just a few, you think? It wasn't deep?
I, I don't, I don't think it was deep.
If you're coming into Southwick on the left?
Yeah.
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 That, that just falls off, doesn't it?
Yeah, it really falls off. We put two new houses up there, too, right? There's two newer homes up.
Further up, further up, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But right at the line is where it was going to come in, right?
Right, literally, yeah.
You can see it, if you look, if you stop and look that direction.
In the winter time especially, you can
Oh, yeah.
jump south.
You can see even the, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right, forget it, there's not a lot of acreage. Well, that's what I was wondering, because the state owns it, right? And, you know, we're not getting taxes on it anymore, they took the houses off, they did everything they could do, and then not develop it. So, it's not big enough for an industrial park, so, I'll shut up. All right, water pump station. Did that, so mass development grant opportunity, we did that. All right. Now we're talking about Russ and the Big Macs. Citation from McDonald's of Southwick's grand reopening.
The hamburger.
The hamburger, all right. So that's tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. I'm not going, well, I should make it, huh?
Eleven o'clock?
Eleven o'clock.
I'll try. Are you going as Ronald McDonald? Who are you going as?
The hamburger.
I'm going to go as Grimace. I'm going to go as Grimace. That'd be fine. All right, so this is, we have to sign this, we have this.
There should be a code over here.
And then?
One was here.
Be the official.
Yeah, I don't get, no, I'm off like a page.
I gotta be clerk from here, I'm failing as a clerk.
All right. The good news is, Russ, you get to, uh, you can, I'll, I'll go, but you're doing all the talking.
Only if I get a signature from Ronald McDonald.
Oh, I'll get your signature from Ronald McDonald, don't you worry. I'll get you a happy meal.
If he disappears and comes back with a signature from Ronald McDonald, don't buy it.
Oh, he'll be there.
I'll speciality that this.
Yeah. All right. So next up is the municipal vulnerability preparedness program grant?
That was, that was eleven A.
That was eleven A. Thank you. So what's in front of me? Letter of understanding between the town of Southwick and Mr. Landis. That make sense? Because then we're done, right? We're on old business?
No, I think, Randy, don't you have, don't you need a signature for that grant, too?
The, uh, MVP program, there was, uh.
Yes, Cindy's got the contract of this.
Eleven A, can you sign it?
No, eleven, it's, no, that was, eleven A was mass development grant opportunity.
Right, which we did.
It's a different issue.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute, I had.
Yeah, it's right there, it's right there, it's below there.
Yeah.
Right, there.
Off of Mr. Baker.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. All right, so we need a motion to sign?
So for the chair? There's just everyone.
Yeah, that's state standard boilerplate contract, for fifteen thousand.
So who's signing it?
Motion for the chair to sign.
Motion for the chair to sign, the boss.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So right here, I'm going to sign. Right? You got a little yellow tag with a name?
Well, you're.
Yes, that's, that's what I put there.
Thank you, sir.
Look for where you.
You're good.
I'm good.
I love it.
All right, stand a whole on damn thing, and then they can argue about it later.
Your signature's as big as Toledo's, wow.
Okay, so that's done. So now we're all set, right? We're back to the old business and dates to remember? Correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I have in front of me, though, um, future Lieutenant Landis's paper that we need to sign.
He signed off the other day, so I'm giving that to you, it's under old business, really.
Okay. So contract has been dealt with?[1701.82]
Yep.
Or is it a contract? What is it? Letter of understanding?
Right. Fred's office if we're gonna sign it.
Okay.
So the board needs to sign it.
Do we need a motion to sign it, or are we gonna just sign? Need a motion to sign Landis's letter of understanding. You wanna second the motion to sign?
Absolutely.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What's this, that?
Love it. Thank you.
All right. So that's everything we've already discussed. Okay. So review of Concom request for coordinator stipend for auto slash cell phone.
Yeah, last week you just wanted some information, so you researched it, you got what you needed, and then you tabled it so you could bring it up again.
Did you guys look over the information that you received? What do you want to table for another week?
We table for another week.
Yeah, I did read some of it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. FY19 DPW bid awards.
Last week, it had been on the agenda, so it was tabled. It's right here. It's in the package.
Last week? So it's in our packet, which is in here, right?
Yeah, there it is.
Thank you. All right. It's, I don't recall seeing this last week.
No, no, it was carried on the agenda. That's why it was listed as old business.
I got you.
It just came in on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. It's our guardrails, our line striping.
Yep, your paving.
Paving, borrowed materials, crack shailing.
Street sweeping.
Hope batch, that's hot mix. Random hot mix, regular top hot mix.
And you're in mid-June now, so you need to vote to award these so that we can get all these things signed and underway.
Any major differences, Randy, that jumped up at you?
Uh, the price of steel has gone up considerably, so our.
Really?
Our guardrail prices are kind of fifty to seventy percent higher this last year.
Imagine that.
Well, our guardrails.
Or if you see someone hit it, how does that work? So?
We, we work with these far, we get a, we get a police report, and we usually go after them. On party at home.
Yeah, we need to now, of course, right?
We've been doing it. We've been doing it for years. Work with the safety officer.
Right.
So generally, pricing they go up, um, the biggest one was the guardrails.
Okay.
But, uh, you know, between zero to five percent, one to five percent.
And everything else? So I.
I didn't write the increases on the letter.
You did? I don't like reading, though. So if I hit a guardrail tonight on the way home, Randy?
Don't do it.
I'm gonna. How does that work with the insurance? So you guys go back and forth, I get all that. But do we wait for a check from the insurance company to repair that, or do we just repair it under our funding mechanism?
We have an account through the town of California for insurance.
We have.
Really?
I can build that, I can charge that deadline item.
Beautiful.
And reimburse that.
It's called an agency insurance revolving account.
Okay.
We can front an expense out of it.
Sure.
And then when the check comes back in, it pays it back. If there's a difference, then, a difference in a lot of money, then he'll have to take it from another line item.
Oh, correct, correct.
But, no, we're able to, most of the time, recover the costs and.
Nice. I didn't know that. Missed them.
But it's important to have the documentation from the police department, usually the safety officer or someone like.
Well, I'm sure the good hits are documented. It's the.
The ones that aren't reported.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there, and there are some of those.
Oh, absolutely. My youth, I owned two hydrants. Luckily, they were in Westfield. Remember Mrs. Chestalini? Do you remember her, teacher? Part of no school upstairs? Oh, she hated me. I took out the hydrant in front of her trailer park. She reminded me. Oh, she was mad. All right, so we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Handle this.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Never passed her class either. That's all right.
Was that before you hit the height?
That was in eighth grade. Best teacher in eighth grade, Mr. Larice.
Gary.
Gary Larice. I didn't know anything in his class. He said, what do you know how to do? I said, I can rebuild a carburetor. I bought a carburetor and rebuilt it in front of him, and he passed me. Nothing to do with his class. I don't even think he knew what he was looking at. That's beside the point.
I just saw Gary the other day.
Yes, we did, at the.
He was at that, at the dedication.
And then I ran into him again.
He still looked young.
He looks great.
He was actually my babysitter in Westfield. He grew up on Lincoln Street with us.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Is there an equivalent cost on the cold in place asphalt recycling compared to the traditional method?
Yep, so cold in place is, runs about twenty-one or twenty-two dollars a square yard.
Yep.
Okay, traditional replacement is like a full depth reconstruction, is it all, no, sorry, a reclamation, which is gonna move out the top four inches of asphalt, replace it with four inches, is it all twenty-six or twenty-seven dollars a square yard? And the cold depth reconstruction, I think, is over thirty, maybe closer to forty.
Cool, because it was right in here at the end of your document. It has the twenty-one fifty-seven, so, and then the, but the pavement material was listed in tons, so.
Right, you have to translate it.
Right, so he just, it was way easier to ask him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so we're doing McDonald's, six thirteen eighteen is the Westfield Chamber Commerce Event at Westfield Savings Bank?
Yep.
Correct.
In Southwick.
In Southwick. Right, and it's at five o'clock, right? Yep, 5:00 PM. If you can make it, that's great. I'll try to attend.
Russ, are you going?
Yeah, I'll probably stop then. Since they asked me twice, so I guess I better.
Yeah, I got a funny story for you, and I'm not gonna tell it, though. All right, so the next up is the ad hoc open space and recreation committee. Where are we with that?
Well, you've got all the people you would like to put on it, except for the conservation hadn't had a meeting, so they haven't finalized their person, but you could go ahead. You can either wait till they have their meeting next week and see what you get from them, or you could go ahead and at least appoint who you can have now.
Wait till next week.
We'll table that for another week.
You're just under that timetable, that's all.
Snow and ice policy work session. I have that paperwork in my desk or my one drawer I get with.
And I gave that to Joe to meet with Randy about it.
I will try to get over to see you today to come up with a day next week we can make. Mornings are best for me, but I'm booked this week. Two hundred and fiftieth anniversary meeting, six eighteen eighteen.
Yep, I'm gonna begin the process.
Right, and did you give me those letters that you have, everyone that's reached out?
It's a whole pack.
Yeah, wonderful.
Is it the only one, or everyone got it?
I don't know.
Was it in our packet?
That should be, yeah, it's right here somewhere. No, I don't think it is.
So what do you want to do? Do we wanna?
What I, what I.
Russ, what would you like to do?
What I envisioned is.
Oh, the vision. Close our eyes, everybody. We got a vision coming.
Cindy is going to attend with me.
Yep.
We're going to get all the names, telephone numbers, addresses, email addresses.
Yep.
And at the conclusion, anyone that would like to be an official member, I'd ask them to sign that they want to do that. And then bring it back to the board.
Yep.
Uh, for, to appoint, and then maybe have the town clerk or assistant town clerk come to the next meeting and swear them on.
Sounds wonderful.
I have.
Yeah.
What was your?
Do we?
Give your copy?
I got it somewhere.
So I wanted to know.
You got let's, you have it here.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not under action.
This is in, in general?
It's in your packet. It's in your meeting.
The one she just gave us?
Yep. Probably in the other thing that you have to hit the clip on it.
It's under old business.
It's under old business?
Yes.
Oh, here it is. Right there. Hey.
Right here.
Hmm?
Okay.
Right here?
What's underneath?
That's my Board of Health, um, drama. Thank you, sorry.
It's all right.
All right. One, two, three, four, five, six. Seven.
Joan Bobb, the chairman.
Eight. Right, so you have quite a few here.
Yes.
So what are we gonna do? We're gonna have a, you're gonna reach out to them, give them the date? We're gonna all meet?
Do you?
Or do you wanna just?
You're, yeah, we're gonna have our first meeting on the eighteenth.
So I'm telling them that we've got their letter of license.
Right, and have them.
Please show up at the meeting.
Please show up.
Yeah.
But it's open to other people.
Open to the public.
Open to the public.
Anybody.
And we're gonna see if, the more people we can get involved, the better.
We finalize who's gonna be on the committee and who's gonna not be on the committee but helping the committee.
Right, right. Do you need to bring a dish or anything, or you're not eating? It's just a quick meeting?
I thought I'd take some money out of the gift account, you know?
Sure.
Dinner, take everybody out to dinner, treat them.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, wine and dine them before they get their root awakening. They got a lot of work out of them.
Read the spelling. It's right on the.
Yeah. Fox.
All right, maybe McDonald's. I'll see what.
Well, see what you get.
Grab up from the grand opening if you have the extra coupons.
Yeah.
Get some coupons.
I know it's cold, but it was good when it was warm. Well, they say that new burger's hotter longer, right? So we're gonna find out. We're gonna find out. Can we get a week out of it?
Well, it's not supposed to be frozen. It's supposed to be for fresh meat.
Yeah, uh-huh. Okay, social media policy, meeting with boards.
Letters have gone out.
Do we have the right mailing address?
June twentieth.
Yep, so June twentieth.
What time on the twentieth?
Six thirty, it says.
Six thirty.
It should be fine. Yeah, because you don't have a board meeting on Tuesday.
No.
You're on summer schedule.
Yeah, we are on summer schedule. Okay. And we're running that whiteboard inside with all the dates on it again? Right.
Okay.
All right, then interviews for deputy chief finalist. Did you guys get your questions in?
Everything's.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I did like seven of them. I was on a roll.
Sandra's gotta give the questions to Fred.
All right.
Tonight.
Fred, no repeats. Seriously, we're tired of asking the same question six different ways. So, you know.
You want something really novel?
What's that?
You want something really novel?
No, I just don't want to repeat the question seven different ways. You know? So we're hoping to have more, you know, we asked for more questions. I gave seven. So out of seven, none of them were the same as these two, I'm sure, but they will be by the time we get them back. So, you know, it's crazy. It's all good, but you gotta admit, it is sometimes, yeah. They look at you like, didn't you just ask me that question? I did, but my tone of voice is different than Mr. Fox's. See, I put a comma here and a period there, so it's almost the same question, but it's not.
You try and trip them up that way.
Yeah, but we look like.
Catch them in a lie.
We don't even know what they're talking about.
It doesn't take much for us.
No, no. Keep seeing that red light, and I keep looking. I don't, I'm done. All right, so that's deputy chief finalist. I thought the Gong Show said next.
When is the next radio?
Goals and objectives.
Yeah, you got your listing after you're, last week you gave it. You just gotta figure out what you want on it. Make any changes to it, add, delete.
Well, since we have the attorney here, we shouldn't waste any time.
I tabled it next week. I mean, Fred's been patiently waiting, so I said table it to next week.
Let us know everything we did wrong today, which is fine. All right, so we'll table that. And Douglas, would you like to table that, or you got any section that concerns? All right. So that's all I have under old business. Then I turn the page to new business. Anything else under old business?
Did I mention that the Southwick Recreation Center is having a comedy show?
Are they?
This Saturday.
Who's the, who's the opening act?
Tickets.
Russ Baugh.
Tickets can be bought at the door. It's a fundraiser.
Can you buy a table?
Yes.
How much is a table?
Uh, sixty, sixty dollars.
Oh, in, in person, they're fifteen, so a table's, what, ten bucks?
Six, yeah, ten bucks.
Ten bucks, that's, that's a deal.
Great entertainment, light refreshments. Doors open at seven. Show starts at eight. It's for the kids.
Always for.
They don't like.
But don't bring the kids to this.
But don't, yeah.
No, don't bring the kids to it.
Or maybe some why they shouldn't go.
For all my wife, right?
They don't like playing basketball with the reins ripping in and.
Yeah.
Floor hockey with the reins ripping in, so. Did I mention that?
I thought you were going ice hockey. That's why the floor, the ceiling opens, no? No ice hockey.
Oh, boy.
Could save on heat, so.
Yeah, ain't a bad idea.
Under old business.
Yes.
Mr. Steiner.
Yes.
Uh, has the process been followed per custom when there's a bylaw passed at town meeting that it's sent to the Attorney General by the town meeting process? And is that process being followed explicitly regarding the personal water cap prohibition that was enacted at the town meeting?
Let's see, I believe a week ago Friday, the town clerk did submit everything to the Attorney General's office related to the proposed bylaws and amended bylaws that have been adopted by town meeting on May fifteenth. So that would have been, you know, ten days ago, and that would, would be the zoning bylaws as well as the general bylaws that were adopted.
But that's the general process, is what the town clerk would submit those to the Attorney General?
That is the legally prescribed process.
Right, so there shouldn't be any other spurious submissions to other governmental entities, correct?
None that would be.
None by us.
That were authorized by this board, correct? Thank you. That's all.
Hmm, okay. That normally takes how long, Mr. Steiner?
I can tell you anywhere from thirty to sixty days. There's a, there's a prescribed period of time where they have to make a disposition, the Assistant Attorney General for municipal.
So once they receive at that clock, then it starts taking.
And sometimes it'll depend upon the nature of what the legislation was. They may have to reach out to other agencies of the Commonwealth, the Department of Revenue, sometimes A and F. So it really depends upon the nature of the piece of legislation that's been adopted.
But once, once they get it, they only have so many days to act on it?
Yeah, right.
Whatever that number is, it is.
Right, but they can qualify things. They can, they can amend things. They can, you know, they can reject them, they can accept them. Uh, generally, they'll make comments for the local town council that they'll, they'll, they might put in some provisos that they want to make sure a local town council's follow up on. Things of that nature.
Okay.
And then when they come back, then, then there's also a prescribed process about how the thing may have to be advertised. Again, when it comes back, and in some cases, nothing needs to be advertised.
Right.
So it really depends upon the nature of the bylaw, and whether it was a general one or a, is only one.
So along with Doug's question, so ninety-six and a half days, someone can't come in front of me and say, we didn't get it back, it automatically passed. So those, there's structure in there. I don't know what it is today. You don't know what it is.
Prescribed process, right.
Right, so it's out there.
But the town clerk has, has done their.
We've done our part.
They've done their statutory.
Right.
Submitted.
Okay.
And they did it with the, uh, the assistance of town council.
Correct. So whatever those days are, they are, and we'll get it back when we get it back.
Right, so that's in motion.
Yeah, oh, I appreciate that, and I'm sure that party appreciates it. All right, that answer your question for the most part?
For the purpose this meeting is.
Yeah, no, I, I got you, in, in purpose of the taping. All right, nothing else under old business?
No.
How about new business?
I just had a, someone question about drones, whether or not.
Drones or drones?
Can we ever enact any local bylaws or ordinances concerning drones?
I don't believe.
Not yet.
The FAA has legislation.
Right, I mean, there's federal and state regulations.
Yeah, I mean, remember at the MMA, we did see there were one or two vendors that carry drones and they use them, you know, they can be used for different applications in communities, but we, it wasn't something that we, uh.
Well, they asked a question, and I, I referred them to the police department because they had an issue, and.
Right.
And that's the little town, huh?
In some communities, police departments do use, do use them for purposes.
Right.
You know?
I was just curious.
Missing, missing people and things of that nature.
They have the ability to do tremendous good and also be a dramatic.
After storms. Doing surveys after storms.
Right.
You know, was it, oh, up there in, um, East Hampton or Monton there, whatever?
Yeah.
And when you had all those trees being, um, damaged. Yeah, it was unbelievable how they went and just filmed all the landscape and what happened after that storm, so. They do have their purposes, and, you know, I'm sure if, if we needed to have one for a specific issue, the police department could reach out to somebody and probably get one fairly quick. Yeah.
Yes, thousand bucks.
There are.
Yeah, if, if someone had a problem, and I said, "I don't believe we have any local," I said, "Why don't you check with the police department if you're having an issue?" Maybe that, maybe.
Flying into people's.
Some other regulation.
Well, that's the thing, right? That's, that's the thing. Right. That's.[1671.94]